I call this meeting of Millersville Borough Council to order as of 7:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed. At this time, I'd like to ask you all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, please be seated. All right, it looks like we'll be starting this meeting off by turning it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have the distinct pleasure and honor to swear in honor of a new police officer for our borough. At this time, I'd like to have Mike Eversol come forward. And Michael is accompanied by his wife and one of his sons. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Michael was an 18-year veteran of York City and also did a year down in Maryland. So, glad that you are part of the family.
Thank you, Mr. Eversol.
Raise your hand, repeat after me, sir. Aye, repeat your name.
Aye, Michael Eversol.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have support, obey, and obey the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this common law.
Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with the plaid hour.
I would discharge my duties and fidelity for this common law.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome to the municipal board.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the last one. I'd like to have his wife and son come up with a great.
Sure.
Coach, would you like to mark a picture?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eversol.
We got some experience.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's good, experience. He knows what he's doing.
Thank you very much. You are very welcome for that. All right, we'll move on to the minutes from last time. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for our council meeting held on October 14th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody have any issues or notes about the minutes? Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
One abstention. Motion will nonetheless carry. At this time, council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You'll have five minutes to speak. We ask that you either come to the microphone up here or ask that the microphone be brought to you. Also, do please give your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody at this time like to address council?
Dorothy Amola and I live in Quaker Hills. I just have a couple of questions. This property where the solar field's going in, can somebody tell me how it was zoned prior to their sale?
It was TND, wasn't it?
TND, you said?
I'm not positive, but I think it was TND, but it was not buildable.
I understand that part. So, if they changed the zoning, then is that the zoning, do zoning that it's going to have, is that normally taxed through in the borough? Or student lodging going to get some more tax-exempt property when they do not have residents on this piece of property?
Sure, so the prior zoning remains. My understanding is that it has been augmented with a green overlay to allow for this construction. As far as the taxation, I couldn't give you an answer right now, but we can have somebody reach out with that information.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think it would be because we're passing these things.
Would anybody else like to address council? Very well, seeing none, we will move on to reports of boards and commissions, starting with a report from Blue Rock Regional Fire Commission. Linda?
The October meeting was held on the 2nd at the Millersville Station. The financial report was reviewed, and they are tight going into September and are waiting for a federal grant reimbursement. Vehicle maintenance and station maintenance continue to grow in costs, and a grant for $60,000 has been submitted. Donations are coming in for the new building, and grants have been submitted from various foundations. Last year, $44,448.45 was received in interest, and this month the interest earning, or last month, was $4,442.70. In September, Blue Rock had 76 total calls, with 38 in the township, four being faults, and 27 in the borough, with 13 being faults. The rest of the calls were outside the district. Expectations to have written approval for the archeological aspect of the new facility should be done soon. Engineers and PennDOT have met on the building location and driveways, and land settlement is expected December 31st. Blue Rock has elections coming up for four board members. And that is it.
Very good, thank you. We'll now move on to our committees, starting with finance, my own committee. And I will start with a motion to accept the September financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. Now, this is out of committee and does not require a second, but is there any discussion or questions about the financial report from council? Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the September financial report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion will carry. to the maintenance of an adequate operating fund balance. This is something that has undergone some revision and discussion already in council. I am prepared to make a motion to adopt that resolution, and that did come out of committee, so it does not require a second. But do we have any further discussion on top of what we've already had about this rainy day balance we're committed to keeping in our general fund? Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion will carry. And with that, we will move on to Personnel Advisory Committee.
Excuse me, Mr. President, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
A gentleman's here from Civil Service Commission. We passed over him.
Oh, my apologies. I looked right past it. Would you like to address council, sir?
Good evening, I'm Tony Hightower.
Could I have you come up to the mic?
Oh, sure.
Thanks, Tony.
I think I'm staying.
Good evening.
Tony Hightower, Vice President of the Civil Service Commission, and I'd like to provide our update. First, I'd like to congratulate Officer Mike Eversol, who was sworn in earlier this evening. Mike did complete all of his core requirements for hiring and was approved per our process in Civil Service Commission, so we're glad to see him moving forward. We're continuing the process for selecting new candidates, continuing with interviews of approximately 20 candidates, seven of whom have Act 120 prior to coming in. So, that process will be ongoing. Civil Service will continue to meet monthly, and we expect to produce a full eligibility list this time and exercise our full civil service process. So, knock on wood, we'll continue forward with that. And that's my report, pending any questions.
Questions for our, for Tony? Chief, Mr. Mayor? Oh, very good, nice to have you, Tony. Appreciate your time, sir. Thank you. My apologies for skipping over you there earlier. I think I just looked past you on the agenda.
No worries at all. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to our Personnel Advisory Committee.
Okay, we have two motions out of committee. The first is the approval of the reappointment of Mike Whitinger to the Planning Commission with the term ending on October 31st, 2029. That's out of committee, so we don't need a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please, I have something to say.
Linda?
Yes. I personally experienced bullying behavior by Mike. He has called members of the Borough Council a mob and has sworn using profanity to force his point and interrupted one of the members speaking. He was aggressive towards four council people in attendance at a planning meeting. Bullying tactics involve a perceived imbalance of power and can be verbally like name-calling. This behavior is intended to intimidate or harm other people. We have a written code of conduct because of past behavior of a council person, as well as Mike's behavior, who stated he was not aware of this code of conduct. Whether a person is aware of a code of conduct or not, the expectations of anyone representing the borough is to represent themselves in a positive manner and one to gain respect. Mike's behavior violated the code of conduct that provides a clear framework for expected behavior that builds positive borough culture and protects against legal risks and states our values. Name-calling and bullying damages the reputation of the borough, and he should not be representing us. Mike has a knowledge base that can be very important to help the borough, but his bullying tactics negates his lifetime of knowledge because he does not allow for others' opinions.
A question. When do we pass that code of conduct? I know we did, but when was that? A year ago, maybe?
A little less, I believe.
Yeah, it was, it was after a planning meeting where Garmin was presenting things to planning, and there were a lot of us here, including almost everyone from council. And that evening, the behavior on the part of Mike was so deplorable that one of the people from, a resident from the borough that was at that meeting, wrote a letter to all of us on council saying that we needed to pass a code of conduct because of the way, I can be very honest, I was treated, and so were some others. And I'm going to say that's probably maybe February. I'd have to go back and look it up, but I do have it, and it has been passed, and it, he has been made aware of this.
Did anyone invoke the code of conduct in seven months?
The only time that I recall, it did not happen at a council meeting, but it did happen at another planning meeting, when Mike was swearing and calling us a mob, if I recall correctly. And at that time, he was made aware of the fact that we, council has passed a code of conduct, so he is very well aware of that, or should be.
But nobody's invoked it in seven months.
Not that I am aware of.
Well, I think you'd be aware of it because we'd all have to.
That's right, we'd all have to vote on it.
I do recall, I don't, I haven't attended a planning committee meeting, but I do recall one evening when there was some sort of an email that went out to the community inviting people to come and talk to Garmin. It was a very frustrating meeting for me, may have been for Joe, too, because it was only the planning and betterment people who could speak to Garmin. And at that time, it's my understanding, and not from Mike Whitinger, from another member of the Planning Commission, that they were told that they didn't, we didn't need the Planning Commission, that council would take care of it. And then later, I guess, people learned that you can't overlook the Planning Commission because that's a mandate. I can only speak to Mike's knowledge, the amount of time that he's given to this position, and the excellent service that he's given to this position. I know it's very frustrating, and I think it was frustrating for the Planning Commission to have to deal with council, particularly that night. I am going to ask for any more discussion, then we'll call for a vote.
I would just like to continue by saying that I do believe I know which meeting you are referring to, and one of the things that had happened was when a number of us showed up at a planning meeting, and Garmin was there, and we wished to question Garmin and ask about the plans that were being presented. We were shut down, and we were told that we could not talk at that time, and we could not ask the questions that we wanted. Therefore, when a council meeting came up and Garmin presented to the council, that's when we, as council members, and my being on Public Works, questioned Garmin. And that's when planning got so upset, and they thought, oh, well, what good are we? What do we have to do? Well, you have to allow residents to ask questions at a planning meeting, which they would not do.
Well, I was not allowed to ask questions at that council meeting during their Planning and Betterment Committee meeting, and I felt left out because I couldn't question only you and your committee people, and I think there were only two other committee people. Joe couldn't question, I couldn't question, and we sat and listened, and our input wasn't able to be given. So, we felt a little left out, too. But once again, anybody else want to weigh in on the discussion before we vote?
And keeping it focused on the appointment of Mr. Whitinger.
That's right, yeah.
Right, wouldn't want to take the whole media on this. I wasn't here last week, and I lived in the borough since 1980, but I wasn't on council 10 years ago, five years ago, even three years ago. I've heard a lot of good comments about Mr. Whitinger. I think he's well-qualified, he had a lot of public service here. So, would we, why is this out of session now? Could we not have a session and we could, I could have some reasons rather than rumor of, you know, I was at one meeting when you were a little out of hand, one before I was in council, and I thought, well, that's a little strange, but I also appreciate your service to the community and your qualifications, so.
What you're, you're measuring this.
Well, we do have a motion on the table.
We do, and you did not miss a great deal last, during the last session, so two weeks ago. Most of the discussion is happening now.
There was no discussion.
Right.
I think what's important here is who represents the borough. I think when we sit here, we're elected. The people in the Planning Commission are not elected individuals. We're elected. When we assume the position on Borough Council, there is a certain expectation of behavior. And so, when we select somebody that is on a committee and planning reports to the council, and council makes a decision, but planning is, it was, it's a referral. It gives us information. And when we have someone that, and you experienced it there, Mike, that evening, when we were called a mob and he swore, and I don't find that someone that should represent the borough.
I don't know. I really appreciate confidence on any group, including council, and Mike is about the most competent person I've ever run across.
As a member of the Planning Commission and a newer member, Mike's institutional knowledge is so valuable. I have not experienced any further behavior that you're describing since that evening, and it was made known that there was a code of conduct. Mike is no longer Chair of the Planning Commission. He's stepped aside. And so, I put my, I put my faith in the importance of the knowledge that he brings about this community to planning, because this is a, this, we're in a time when there's some big decisions that are going to be made, and that, that knowledge that goes back a long time, I think, is really, really helpful for me as a member of that Planning Commission.
Given the perceived contention and the, and barring any further discussion, may I recommend a roll call vote.
Oh, definitely. Emma?
I can do that. All right. Councilmember Cuthbert?
We're voting the nomination, this is a nomination out of committee to reappoint Mike Whitinger.
And we're suggesting we will have a committee discussion, no?
No, this was the discussion. This is the vote.
This was the discussion, no.
In favor. Councilmember Crawford?
I sort of agree with Angela. I was at that meeting, and it was disturbing, but he's not in charge, he's not leading the, I've been hearing a lot of things from the Sewer Department, and a lot of things that are going to be going on, so I think I would have to say aye.
Councilmember Gerber?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyberson?
Nay.
Councilmember Baleel?
Nay.
Councilmember Kurlavich?
Aye.
And councilmember?
Aye.
You guys have it, with five to two.
Thank you. I have another motion out of committee, and this time, it's the approval of the nomination of Angela Cuthbert to the Lancaster County Planning Commission candidate pool. Once again, that's out of committee, so discussion?
So, this is not an appointment to the Lancaster County Planning Commission itself, but just to add councilmember Cuthbert to the?
Her name to a pool of candidates throughout Lancaster County. And when a vacancy arises, then the Lancaster County Planning Commission will look to the pool to select a replacement.
I got you, and this is something that you volunteered for? All right.
I wouldn't do that.
I didn't know if we were just throwing her to the sharks.
Yes, if she was interested. Okay, putting it to a vote, I don't think we need a roll call on this one.
I would imagine not.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the ayes have it. And that is the end of the Personnel Committee.
Very good. In that case, we will move on to Public Welfare and Public Works Advisory Committee? Good lord, what words today. If you don't mind.
The first item is discussion and approval of draft resolution concerning tax-exempt financing for student lodging solar project. This was.
I forgot that was on the agenda, my apologies. I could have just told you to stay tuned.
So, tax-exempt, yeah.
Yeah. This is out of committee, so a second is not needed, as soon as I find my place here.
And the tax-exempt financing in this case comes from a third party? Penn IDA, I believe.
They're here. Isn't he here?
An IDA.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the resolution concerning tax-exempt financing for student lodging solar project. I do not need a second because it is out of committee. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can we pause for a moment?
Yes, discussion.
Yes, I just want to make sure that nobody has any questions or concerns about, especially questions about something like this, before we move on to the vote. Okay, I'm not actually seeing any. I thought there would be some. My apologies.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion is carried. Then the next item here, discussion and approval of the Cottage Avenue Solar Project subdivision and land development final plan submission and waiver request. I make a motion to conditionally approve the subdivision and land development plan for the Cottage Avenue Solar Project submitted by Student Lodging, Inc. upon completion of the items in the Borough Solicitor 10425 letter and the Engineers 102125 letter. Is there any discussion?
And my understanding is the exceptions we're looking for here mostly have to do with the sizing on the plans and an exception to that?
That type of thing, yes.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And then the motion is carried. Now that we have a motion, I make a motion to conditionally approve the financial security of $195,412 for the Cottage Avenue Solar Project, pending final review of the Borough Engineer.
Do we?
Discussion.
Yep, do we know when that review is going to be performed and/or completed?
I do not know. Emma, do you by any chance know?
No.
Has the engineer been in contact with you, sir?
He's not.
Okay.
Will you give me a little time to change?
Sure, I understand that. I just wanted to know what kind of a timeline we're looking at as this moves through the process, but it sounds like it's not scheduled yet, but this is all, but it's still pending his review, so I'm fine.
Okay, any questions or anything from anyone else? Okay, the motion does not require a second, it's out of committee. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then that motion is carried. The next motion is to approve the waiver requests of Section 325-8 preliminary plan submission and Section 325-14B and 325-15A, plan scales for the Cottage Avenue solar project. Is there any discussion? And this is also out of committee, so it does not require a second. If there is no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is carried. And the final motion along this line is a motion to approve the waiver requests for Section 326-6, construction of curbs and sidewalks required for the Cottage Avenue solar project. I make the motion, and it is out of committee and does not require a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we, do you recall where we landed on the question of sidewalks for that area?
That it would not happen, I don't believe, until it became to a point where it might become necessary. That's why it's a waiver at this time.
Yeah, were we talking about a walking path or something of that nature at that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Can we stall it early in the morning?
Appreciate that.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is carried, and that concludes the Public Welfare and Public Works report.
Thank you very much. On to you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I'm just going to turn it over to the chief to go over the monthly report.
Okay, summary of police department activities for the month of September are as follows. We answered 366 calls for service, 18 calls for ordinance complaints, two involving animals, five with disorderly conduct, seven with noise, two open alcohol, and two others, for a total of seven ordinance citations being issued, and one disruptive conduct report being issued. We made 14 criminal arrests that involved nine adults and five juveniles. We had one Part I offense and cleared that one for 100% clearance. We had 11 Part II offenses, I'm sorry, 40 Part II offenses and cleared 40 of those for 100%. The officers issued a total of 59 traffic violations, one for speeding, 19 others. They handled nine vehicle accidents, five of which were reportable, four were non-reportable, issued 226 parking tickets, and patrolled 2,670 miles. That's it.
Does that number of Part II offenses feel high to you?
No, that's, that's fairly.
Okay.
Fairly average.
All right, appreciate that. Anything to add, Mr. Mayor?
No, thank you very much.
All right, appreciate that. And from there, we will move on to our Millersville University report with Ms. Norman.
Hello, everyone, thanks for letting me speak today. We have a long report, so I'm just going to get started. Millersville University mourns the loss of student athlete Sidney Barnes on Monday, October 20th, 2025. Sidney was a three-year starter for the golf team, known for her bright smile and dedication to the growth of her teammates. On the golf team, she scored the first hole-in-one in the history of the program and helped the program set a school record for wins in 2025. The Millersville community extends its deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Sidney Barnes, and services are available for students, staff, and faculty who are struggling during this time. On October 17th, Millersville Student Athletes Partner On October 17th, Millersville student athletes partnered with Make-A-Wish Foundation to help a 13-year-old boy with a heart condition known as cardiomyopathy, Silas Eberle, reveal his wish of going to the World Series. Dr. Brian Traut, Associate Professor of Accounting and Finance, was named the 2025-2026 Educator of the Year during our epic weekend convocation. Dr. Margaret Mabigno, Associate Professor of the Department of Exploratory Studies and Student Development, was named the inaugural recipient, recipient of the 2024-2025 Outstanding Faculty Service Award at the 2025 State of the Villa dress. On October 23rd, Millersville University's Center for Health and Education and Promotion hosted its annual Purple Carnival. This interactive carnival-themed resource fair was dedicated to educating the campus community about healthy relationships and awareness about domestic violence and related issues. On October 31st and November 1st, the play Amidst of Faith will be performed in the Student Memorial Center. This play is free to attend and is written and directed by Millersville alum Nate Gadston of '97 to honor the memorial of Dr. Hazel L. Jackson. Dr. Jackson was the first female African-American professor at Millersville University, and the play serves to honor her memory. While the event is free, tickets are still required for entry, and I believe you can contact the ticket office for those who are interested. The 2026-27-2027 Free Application for Federal Student Aid, FAFSA, is now open. Filing early ensures you receive the best possible consideration for federal student, state, and institutional aid. There has been a tremendous show up of undergraduates seeking, undergraduate seeking vigils at, goodness, at the Millersville Open Houses thus far. On October 18th, there are more than 400 students and families interested in what Millersville University has to offer. There is expected to be the same amount for the final open house on November 8th, 2025, with activities beginning at 8:00 a.m., so beware of the traffic. On November 9th, 2025, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., the Office of Alumni Engagement will collaborate with the, with the conference services and university dining and catering services to, to present an opportunity for wedding professionals and engage in couples to connect at an on-campus wedding expo. Dr. Arthur Benjamin, Visiting Professor for Public Outreach at the National Museum of Mathematics, presents Mathemagix at 6:30 p.m. on November 6th in the Millersville University Student Memorial Center. This event is open to the public free of charge, but tickets are still required for entry, which I believe you can also still contact the ticket place. In recognition of its 15th anniversary season, the Ware Center held a celebratory evening on September 20th for its community partners, supporters, and local artists. To celebrate, the Ware Center promises a season to remember with a diverse lineup of exceptional arts experience from around the globe and talents from our incredible Lancaster community. Millersville University put on another successful Pride Fest, featuring a drag show and several other activities. Our annual Pride Fest celebrates national coming out there and students in the LGBTQIA community, providing a welcome space for all through activities and unity. And that's everything.
Any questions for Ms. Norman? All right, thank you, Abby. We have our Penn Manor representatives. Mr. Smith is back for another year. I can't see your companion's nameplate. There we go. I'll take a stab and say Steiglman, but my eyes aren't that good. Very good. Gentlemen.
All right, well, thanks for having me back and glad to have Cohen join me this year. I would also agree, a little bit of a longer report than usual, but that just means good things are happening. So to kick it off, Penn Manor High School is having their 33rd Annual Education Day College and Career Expo. This event is going to take place on Monday, November 3rd, from 11:15 to 1:15 in our main gymnasium, the Frye Gymnasium as it was recently renamed. The expo is open to all Penn Manor High School students regardless of grade level from nine to 12 and their families. Representatives from approximately 100 colleges, trade schools, industries, and military units will be in attendance, and it's just a great opportunity for our students to learn more about the diverse range of educational and career paths available to them. And we also have a list of representatives online. And then Cohen is going to talk about something that the juniors did specifically.
Thank you so much for having me. On Thursday, October 23rd and Friday, October 24th, junior achievement was at Penn Manor High School with their real-life, real-life program. All students in 11th grade participated in a day-long program consisting of a series of activities aimed at financial literacy and career readiness. The highly engaging activities are intended to help students appreciate the importance of owning their own economic success. And here's Landon.
And then just a couple of last things here, kind of in our sports world, if you will. Penn Manor's crismol team is off to a great start. They finished fifth of 25 teams at Lehigh Valley Invitational and are currently in the first round of WJAL Brainbusters versus Redland. They are currently undefeated at 6-0 in our Lancaster Lebanon League. We do have two athletic teams who are moving on to states as soon as they finish districts. With a convincing win of four to one over Mannheim Township Saturday night, our field hockey girls team has earned a spot in the district semifinals, which will be held tomorrow at Comet Field at 7:00 p.m. Might be a lot of traffic heading that way too, coming off of 7:24 there. And then, 7:42. And then our soccer girls team also took down a pretty good team. Cumberland Valley was the number one seed, and they won in a 2-0 win. And on Tuesday night, they will also head to their district semifinals match for a 6:00 p.m. matchup at Northern York High School. And that is all we have. Thank you for your time again.
Not at all, thank you. Our manager is at a conference, or at least on her way back from a conference. Emma Denae, do you have something on her behalf?
My name is Sue.
Oh, that's right.
That's coming up.
Sue, you want to talk to us about Veterans Day?
Hello, everyone. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Sue Mapala. I'm the receptionist here at the borough, and I'm also one of the organizers at the Veterans Day ceremony. I would like to take a few minutes to invite everyone to attend this year's ceremony on Tuesday, November 11th at 10:30 at Freedom Memorial Park. I would also just like to take some time to tell you a little bit about this event. This truly is a community event. The Red Rose Veterans Honor Guard will attend this year. Members First Federal Credit Union will be again donating the wreath, and we will have a short ceremony this year of the placing of the wreath at the memorial wall, followed by the playing of taps. Stephen Shaw, Command Sergeant Major with 25 years of service with the United States Marine Corps and the National Guard will be our speaker this year. As of right now, we have a representative from Senator Scott Martin's office and a representative from Congressman Lloyd Smucker's office. Representative Smith Wade L. of our 49th District will be attending, along with two of our county commissioners. The fifth graders from Mardick Elementary School will be there, and they bring homemade cards for the veterans. And you have to attend the ceremony because they're going to be singing the 50 nifty United States. So everyone should attend to hear that. We would like to thank Millersville University for all that they donate to make this event a success. Charles F. Snyder Funeral Home brings a golf cart and helps people that are unable to walk from the parking lot to the ceremony, and they stay to take them back. We always get a donation of cookies from John Hirsch and snacks from her snack company. Mayor Angel will be our master of ceremonies. We will have councilmember President Joe Lane, Chief Markovich, and Rebecca DeSantis-Randle giving remarks. We will have Pastor Stephen Kotay, who is our chaplain for the police department, and he will be giving the invocation. Oh, and Emma Denae singing the National Anthem. Phil Gerber will read the names of the bricks dedicated this year. We have 10 bricks, which will make a total of 854 bricks installed in the courtyard. And there is more space, and I do have forms if you want to purchase a brick for next year. Millersville Borough Manager Rebecca DeSantis-Randle will read the names of the hometown heroes banners. There were 23 hung this year. Now, there'll be an article in the advertiser next week. If you liked it, I gave the information. Somebody used my name. Now, each attendee receives an American flag, but one, one of the most special parts of this ceremony is when we play the anthems of the branches and the veterans stand. And we have people helping them stand if they would like to and if they're not able to. And last year, we started new. Each of the veterans received a flag from their branch, so that made them feel really, really good. And they appreciate this so much. But I do not want to forget the borough's employees and many, many, many other people. And as I mentioned in the beginning, this is truly a community event, and I, for the borough, invite each of you to attend. If you cannot attend, we ask you to stop by the veterans' memorial and pay tribute to those who have served and who continue to serve our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
That's it for the manager's report, I presume? Very well. I have little to add, other than this will be our last borough council meeting prior to Election Day. So everybody, please, I encourage you to do your civic duty, come out, vote. We have a lot of municipal offices, judges, so forth, decisions to make, so I encourage you to do so. Otherwise, I am going to make a move that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I will now call-